Chairman of the Shasberry Select Board and I am calling this meeting of the Shasberry Select Board to order at 6:30 on Monday, May 20th, 2019. First, let me check, does any member out of the board have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No.
No. Approval of minutes, we have one set of minutes that we've been trying to get approved. Tim Sky against Art Whitman, Tony Kulakowski, Tind Harrington, Joe Barber, we're all here. All right, this is for April 29th that has been circulated. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Tony, seconded by Ken. Any discussion on the minutes for April 19th? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? The motion, the minutes for April 29th, again, April 29th are approved, 5-0-0. Next up, warrants. First up, I have check warrant number 35 in the amount of $115,460.51. Motion to approve from Tony.
Second.
Seconded by Art. Items over $1,000 are $6,500 to Blue Cross Blue Shield, $2,600 to Bennington County Regional Commission, $2,800 to Business Card Services. Do you remember what that is?
Well, a big part of the $1,800 was for the shed, the compost shed. I bought it through the card and that's been reimbursed by a grant.
Oh, Business Card Service just means your credit card.
Yeah, it's the credit card, yeah.
Okay, okay, right, right, right. $2,600 to Delory, $1,400 to GFO Fuels, $1,800 to Goldstone Architecture, $4,400 to Recycle Away Systems and Solutions.
That is new garbage and recycling cans for the parks. That's also state grant, well, it's coming out of the park fund.
Okay. $44,000 to Russell Construction. Should probably just about take care of it.
Yeah, we have one more payment when the last i is dotted. We're very, very close to that, so.
$7,400 to TAM, $2,100 to UI Insurance Services.
The garage was, not the garage, the fire department was recalculated and we had it up at $2,900.
Is that, is that passive?
Yeah.
UI Insurance Services?
Yes.
Oh, okay. $2,600 to Vermont State Treasurer, it says for dog licenses. $1,800 to PT Department of Environmental Conservation.
That is our municipal roads general permit fee. That'll be annual, that's the second payment of the year. So there's a $400 payment and then that one every year.
$14,000 to Weaver Landscaping, $7,000 to Weaver Landscaping, $3,000, and $5,600, all to Weaver Landscaping.
And those are all part of the grant, that's all coming out of grant money, except for $5,000.
Those are the road projects.
Yeah, the road projects, yes.
Yes, right, right, right. Any other discussion on check warrant number 35?
Did you save $4,400 for garbage cans? For the park?
Yes, I did.
It's pretty close. They're not cheap, Ken.
Good enough.
We went through quite a series of them, they have to be sturdy enough to withstand the environment, including people smacking them all the time.
Yeah.
And they have to be the right color. You have to have two different colors to meet the state and they're all required by state law. You have to have a garbage and recycling next to each other in each park and in different venues in the park.
Right.
So you can't use a 55 gallon drum.
Yeah, well, you know, because they, you know, if it's not, these have posts which will be anchored. Otherwise, they get tossed around and then we have to send the road crew over to clean up the park and...
So they're what, so they're chained or...
Yeah, well, they have posts, these have a lockable thing so that they swing out, you pull the can out and empty it and then you put it around, one side is recycling, one side is trash.
All right, that explains it.
Yeah, no, there's two for Howard, there's six or eight for Howard Park. Two for Cleveland, I mean, and four for Howard Park.
I just, it just sounded...
No, I know.
Once you explain it, I understand.
No, once you start looking at these books, you're kind of floored at the price of them. Yeah, raccoons, bears and all the other things you have to keep out.
Yeah, yeah, all right.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor of approving check warrant number 35, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? So, check warrant number 35 in the amount of $115,460.51 is approved, 5-0-0. Next, I have payroll warrant number 23 in the amount of $19,338.18. Motion to approve from Tony.
Second.
Seconded by Art. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? So payroll warrant number 23 in the amount of $19,338.18 is approved, 5-0-0. Does anyone have any announcements?
For, Memorial Day Parade is in North Bennington this year.
Okay.
Kicks off at nine o'clock.
Memorial Day Parade, North Bennington, nine o'clock. Good, thank you. Also want to mention that Town of Shasberry is hiring a full-time Department of Public Works crew member. So if you are interested or if somebody is, who is interested, please contact the town administrator. And also want to mention that we have openings on the Planning Commission and the Development Review Board. So if anyone is interested in serving the town in those capacities, please contact the town administrator as well. Any public comments? Treasurers' report, Melanie Dexter, welcome. Pull up a chair. Sorry, we didn't think to do that for you.
Oh, that's okay. Dave, did you want to talk about formalizing the procedure that we were talking about for things like issuing tax refunds? Or did you want to wait until the new fiscal year for that?
Let's wait for the new fiscal year.
Okay. So that's something to look forward to. If you want to pull up the cash flow one?
I will try to do that again and see what happens. And it comes up blank.
Oh, it sounds like, I think you've got the tab, you've got the wrong tab open at the bottom, oops.
Oh.
At the bottom of the spreadsheet, you had it on the... Yeah, move it over to the left. You've, you're on... Oh, this, this looks like there's another tab.
This is just a PDF.
Oh.
That's all I've got.
Oh, that's a PDF, okay.
Yeah. Hang on, let me try from the Dropbox where I got it, maybe it was in the transition.
I believe that was in an email though.
Email, okay, let me try that.
Yeah, because I normally send them email.
It's a separate email.
I mean, it's not the end of the world, these mid-month ones are not terribly informative.
Yeah, you should have gotten that right around noon.
There's got to be one with an attachment on it, they stand out nicely, but I can't see it.
Well, it doesn't matter, I can tell you the parts of it that are...
Sorry about that.
Interesting, it's not important. The main thing that I wanted to mention is that we are, we don't have to worry about our cash flow. We got some money from, from the state education that I was hoping we would get. We got about $50,000-something thousand dollars, so that's enough of a buffer so we don't have to worry about, about our cash running out in the short term before the end of the fiscal year. So that's a load off our minds. So we're, we're looking like we'll probably end the fiscal year with, I don't know, Dave's trying not to spend any money, so...
We have at least five cents. It's going to be close, but we'll, we'll be...
It's closer than other years, we'll have $70,000 or $80,000 in cash probably, so not anything to worry about.
But that's what the voters approve, so...
Yeah, it's, it's, we'll be right up to the borderline. But that's, yeah, that's what the budget was, so...
Yeah, that's fine. So that was the main thing, we don't, there's nothing in the way of cash particularly coming in these days, so I'm not projecting that we'll get anything except for delinquent taxes. I guess Mert said that he's got, he's had some success in the last couple of weeks. For the reserve accounts, the only activity for the most part is that I, every time I...
You got that one.
Oh, you do have that one, okay, okay, so you can look at that. I mean, you can see a lot of money moving back and forth, that's, when you look at the credits and debit columns, that's just mostly I'm making the general fund hole for all of the checks that you write against these funds. I say this every time, but I'm really keeping a very close watch on that because of, because of how close we were projecting for cash. But as I say, between the money we got from the, from the state and also just making sure every time we write a check, especially for the garage, I immediately transfer the money back over to the general fund, so that's, that's why you see all those transfers happening. I don't think I have anything else to say in particular, anybody have any questions?
Last week, Dave and I were talking and I kind of made the comment on why do we have to borrow money just for the short term when there's all these cash reserves? And he was going to check with the auditor, see if we could do a paper slide.
Yeah.
And did, did you do that?
Well, he's not come yet, he'll be, he'll be here...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, we've got that on our...
Yeah, we talked about that, yeah.
Two asked questions, yeah, I wondered about that, that just, it would just be an accounting thing that it's money that's owed to, every time we, as I say, every time we write a check, the money is owed to the general fund, I wondered whether it could ever be owed in the other direction.
I just hate paying interest, that's all, so...
Yeah, I mean, it seems to be completely standard to take out these lines of credit in anticipation of tax...
That, that I'm not concerned about.
Oh, you mean if we were bouncing up against the short term?
Just the short term, that's all I was concerned about.
Yeah, I, I think there's probably a way to do it, but that's on our, on my list of questions.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Anything else?
Yeah, okay, thank you, Melanie. All right, next up is Rose Report and we have our road friend or our director of public words, we're still not sure who he is, Mike Canati, welcome.
How are you?
How's it going out there?
Well, not too bad. The weather hasn't been the best, but we're moving along.
It hasn't rained in several hours.
No, well, it rained by house, at the house.
Okay, so I was wrong. It has rained in the last couple of hours. But that's, that we're used to.
Do you want to do the grant first?
So here we can open the, the two grants, well, off the awards, the bids, you have there.
So this is for work up in Shasberry Hollow?
It's the upper end of Shasberry Hollow, remember three years ago, we received a grant from the state to do an engineering study up there, this is north of Dwyer Camp.
This is the Better Back Roads grant?
Yeah, and it took several years to get the funding on this grant to actually do the work they recommended, so this is just going to wrap that up.
And how big is the grant?
The grant itself is $20,000 with a matching $5,000.
Okay, okay. So we have two bids here, this one is from Matt Morse Excavating. And the total amount, this is for Shasberry Hollow Road, section one, two and three, $29,250. From Matt Morse Excavating. This other one is from Weaver Excavating. And this again has the same sections on here. And the total that's written on here is $25,000 even. So $29,250 versus $25,000. Okay. I'm just looking at it closely, there's some lines on this printout that didn't show up on this one for writing in the amount, so Weaver has written, yeah, Weaver has written in the amount up here.
Is, is that Matt's?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just told Matt to write it on the bottom of the sheet there, so he probably drew those lines in.
Oh, okay, yeah, now that you mention it, it does look like pen lines drawn, okay.
Because he called me and asked me, he said, where, where should I write it in? I said, write it on the bottom of that sheet, it would be fine.
Yeah, yeah, and it says LS $25,000, does that mean anything?
Lump sum.
Lump sum, okay. Just want to make sure we get that all out. These are both written on the same bid form, so I presume the work is exactly the same.
Yeah, usually we have Dave go through it, but I don't see any point in it because I mean, it's just a straightforward thing, isn't it, Mike?
Yeah, it's just...
And the contractors were taken up to an onsite with Mike, they walked it, the three of them together, it was only those two...
I had three contractors with a pre-bid meeting. And only two bid.
Right, right. So they're bidding on the same work?
Yeah. The third contractor called me and said that he just was not able to bid this one because it has a deadline. There's a deadline for this work to be completed by the end of June, June 21st. I have a deadline on this job because the grant ends for the fiscal year.
June 30th.
June 30th.
Weaver's been doing a lot of work, he thinks he's going to, he can get it in.
Yeah, he says, they both did, I asked him, I asked all of them and they all said they could start right away. When we, when we were at the pre-bid meeting.
I make the motion, we award the grant to Weaver.
We have a motion to award the Shasberry Hollow Roadwork Project to Weaver Excavating at a price of $25,000.
Second.
Seconded by Tony. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining? So if that motion passes, the bid is awarded to the little bit from Weaver for $25,000.
We'll get that going.
Thank you.
So how are, how are things holding up? We've been doing some grant work around town, I've noticed it on Horton Hill.
Yeah, we, so far this year for grant work, there was five sections that had to be completed. Plus this one that we just put out to bid, we did. Weaver's done a section on Salagannon and Murphy Hill. So at the intersection of Salagannon and Murphy Hill, removed a bunch of trees, stone lined, excavated a ditch and then stone lined the ditches up through and put in a French mattress that goes across Salagannon and into the ditching that he just did. And then a little bit on the opposite side of the intersection. Horton Hill, which he's still working on right now because we added a few things, just stone lined ditching and then we put a cross culvert in at the bottom and now we're stone lining the other side from Madison Road. And then re-establishing a ditch on the opposite side because it really wasn't a ditch and the road was starting to slough off. So we're re-establishing a ditch and stone lining that. And that'll take care of that Better Back Roads grant. There was a section on Cold Spring. Closer to White Creek, was just regular, just ditching and some stone turnouts. That was part of the grant. There was a French mattress, which is just a big underdrain. It's like a culvert, but it just, it acts the same as a culvert, but it's just a big burrito of stone. Fabric, stone, and then it hits the water to go through and under the road and sucks the water all in from all different directions. They seem to work pretty good. And that was on West Mountain in the dip where the orchard is and the swamps. And then there was Cider Mill. The top section of Cider Mill, so it'd be the north end, almost Maple Hill. There was two French mattresses, about 300 feet of ditch in and then we had to reset an existing culvert. There was an existing culvert that was too high in the swamp, so the water just, all the work we did couldn't get to the culvert, so we made a decision, we reset it and lowered it and seems to be functioning well. Had a pre-bid meeting, went out to Shasberry Hollow with three contractors, gotten, got that all out to bid and now that's awarded. That'll take care of all the grants for this fiscal year 19. And then we can start fiscal year 20.
During the scope of that, we did run over $18,000 on the one grant because as we got into it, there were things that needed to be done. So it just came straight out of the Class III Road Fund instead of stopping when there were obvious things to continue with.
What was that, the French drain, extra French drain?
Yeah, well, the drain, the culvert there dropping that, the French drain, yeah.
Adding an extra French drain on Salagannon and Murphy Hill intersection and dropping the culvert on Cider Mill.
Was that areas had been bad this spring?
Yeah.
What's that?
Was that areas had been bad this spring?
Yes, it's been bad, yeah, actually the spot where we put the French mattress on Salagannon, on that triangle intersection, was ice all winter, so I'm hoping that, hoping that the water stays through that and...
Well, that's, that's bloody well strapped through that anyway.
Yeah, hopefully, I think it should work.
Yeah. Where they put those stone ditches in? Is there fabric under that or just...
Actually, no. So they're used, I just had a conversation with this, we actually have another grant that this engineering firm is actually doing at a road erosion inventory and a stormwater inventory for our town. And I met with him the other day and we looked at some stone lined ditches. There was this one on Mountain View and one on Cross Hill that all have fabric under them and back when they put the fabric under the stone ditches, it was required to do it. Now there's no requirement for fabric under stone.
Yeah.
And his, his reasoning was that the stone slides on the fabric, that, so they were doing away with it and then, and then looking at the two sections that were, where the stone was, actually stone did slide from the velocity of the water. When it's placed just on the earth, when it's placed in a natural ditch, it actually stays where it needs to, needs to be and slows the water down. So that's why they went away from doing the fabric. It's not a better management practice anymore.
I'm curious, in the future, how do we clean those ditches out? Do we, do we throw away all that stone or can you scoop off the top of it or what?
In some cases, you have to restart over and redo it and some cases, they, we just went to a training the other day and they were showing pictures of a vegetated stone lined ditch and the guy said if it's working, don't touch it. And then I was thinking with our blower that we purchased last fall that we could probably maintain, clean them out the best we can.
In, in winters past, we pushed a lot of stone into the ditches with the snowplows and that's...
They do, they do make me nervous on the dirt roads.
That concerns me.
They just changed the, they actually wanted stone on anything from 5% grade up and they just changed that, so it doesn't have to be like, like Horton Hill is so steep, that needs stone. And that section on, that needs stone, but they want, they want us to start doing check dams and vegetated ditch. So you would have your check dam and then grass. Because a check dam is just, you can remove that and put a new one in a lot quicker.
A lot quicker, yeah.
For, that's for like a 5% and flatter.
Yeah, okay.
But yeah, I think there's a little, that's the only thing that's with the stone is pushing all the gravel and everything in there. But they do slow, it does slow the water down and keeps the ditch from eroding faster, so we'll see how they work.
It's not, that's not something we only do on steep sections, so it's not like...
Yeah.
Best practice is just to stone line every ditch.
No, we've actually found some flat ditches that are all four to six minus stone. And I'm not sure why, like flat. Myers Road by, the flat section of Myers Road, where would we be by? Adams Lodge, Bealeski's, that's all flat and it's all stone lined. I don't know, not sure why. But it's all filled in, leaves are...
Yeah.
No. We won't be stone lining flat ditches. Just vegetating as soon as possible.
What is that, Myers Road, Dave?
Between...
They have the sheep on one side.
Between the guy that has the dog, that's, that's our problem.
Yeah, yeah.
That was what they put out, they would have turned the mud two years ago. They used that big stone on the road itself.
No, it's in the ditch.
It's in the ditch.
It's like...
Yeah, but it probably got pushed off in the spring, a lot of it.
No, this is, this was placed with a machine and...
Really?
Yeah.
Because they put a lot of that in the road itself with it, with the mud.
I bet they did.
Because it was all that we had.
No, but this one was actually placed stone. I'm sure it's been added to over the years.
Okay.
Couple other things, the town crew has been, we've been working on Town Line Route. We're complete, completely ditching the whole route from top to bottom and we've replaced one culvert. We probably have another, probably with seeding and mulching and everything, I'm going to say we have two days on Town Line Road and then that'll be all set. Till it needs to be graded again. But we've done the brush and all the ditching and added a culvert where there, there was a culvert but was not functioning.
The grader is running full time, I assume?
Every, every chance it can. I've had both going, actually one is still sitting and hitting because of the weather, just haven't been able to, but yeah, we had it out today, we were, we cleaned Sim Dean Road. We took all the shoulders on Sim Dean Road, all the high berms, wind rode it into the middle and hauled it all away, get some better drainage on that. So it was out today. Still wasn't the best, the shoulders were soft and it was kind of touch and go. Some work that we're gonna, we have some contracted work we're gonna put out this year for fiscal '20. We have a section on Myers Road that we're going to put out to contract. I'm not 100% familiar with this section because V-Trans designed a fix for us in 2000, before 2000...
Yeah, this was last year, we had the engineers up, but it gave us a lot of alternatives. Then with the bit of turmoil we had last year, we didn't move forward, so Mike's going to take what they gave us and go back with Chris and come up with a solution because we need to do that this year.
And that, yeah, and that's in that vicinity that we were just talking about from where the, the sheeps are all the way past...
Like from when you're coming out of the pond to the bend.
The pine section. But Chris, Chris has given me, or the town, like seven different scenarios, so and I just, once he gets time, we're going to meet back out on that one. And then we're gonna, we're gonna end up putting that out to bid, we're going to contract that out. Chris from V-Trans has also designed an underdrain on Trumbull Hill and that is just above Oak Hill Road, or you know where Oak Hill, the development is on Oak Hill. Well, just going up the hill, almost to the top, there's a section that, section that's gone to mud for a long time and he's designed this underdrain that goes down the center of the road and then ends up outletting alongside of a culvert. So we're, we are going to do that after... So we're, we are gonna do that after, uh, after July first, we're gonna fit that into the schedule. That's something that the town's gonna do with the town crew. There's also another under drain section we're gonna do on West Mountain Road. And that's is Charlie Hall's up through, me and Kenneth talked about that one. We're gonna do that with the town under our own forces. Um, V Trans has designed another fix, another under drain on West Mountain, but it's more, it's in the orchard going up the hill on another section that needs some work, but we're gonna contract that out. We just got the, the estimates and the plans and what he's, scope of work and what he's uh wants us to do. So we're gonna end up putting that one out to bid too. Shastberry Hollow where the, you go the ho- hollow hideaway, then you've got the sharp turn up through there. That section of road, it's about eight hundred feet, we're gonna reconstruct that whole section of road. There's a driveway culvert and a culvert under the road that, the driveway culvert's existing and it's up on, it would be on the, yeah, the north side of the project. And that culvert is plugged, so I had V Trans add that into it and then there's another culvert where there's a lot of water that lays down in this guy's property that can be moved to the other side of the road, down a drainage ditch that's already there, so. So it'll be um, new base, excavating the old base, new base, ditching, um, new top and two culverts and fabric and everything. So it's a little eight hundred feet of road project, we will be putting that out to bid after the fiscal year. I'm, I also met with the state again on White Creek Road in the depression. I met with the geotechnical side, they are going to bore sixty feet down, they want, they, she wants to bore sixty feet.
Hit the stream down the bottom of the hill.
That's, that's why she wants to go that far.
It'll be a gusher. That won't get over the stream though, sixty feet.
No, she, she, she stood on the bank and we walked all the way down and uh she was estimating about where, how far down to go and. So that, once they get that boring, when they do the boring, she can design a fix. And some, you know, put us in the right direction, see what's going on. Is it gonna be, is it a castrated failure or is it something that we can do? But until we get there, I think we're gonna have to shim that for now. I know uh, me and Dave talked about added weight and stuff, but when I was out there with her, because it's only a few inches of pavement and it's, it's a short little stretch, it's not gonna, it's, it won't affect it too much, cause I did ask her, I said, well, if this doesn't get done this year, that's not, it's not really good right now for the truck traffic and then for winter maintenance, it's not really ideal. And she's, she was fine with shimming it. Me a couple inches of asphalt and it'll get us through, not a per- permanent fix, but definitely. Yeah, it's, it's not nice.
Two, two feet of black tap in there now.
I'm not really sure what's under there, but we'll find out.
That timetable would be for shimming that probably in the beginning of July and letting it settle and if it needs to be done again before the plant closes in December. We'll do it again before, cause we did shim by Brownell several times before we fixed that. And as long as the engineer doesn't expect it just to slough off and uh, right now I'm more concerned about a truck. Uh, cause you're coming into a bend.
Yeah.
And you're dipping to the right when you're supposed to be going left and uh.
She had a funny name for it, she called it a scarf.
Yeah.
So is the state gonna help, I assume they're paying for the boring to sixty feet of boring?
She says that it comes out of the revolving fund.
Yeah, the state revolving.
The state revolving fund, so they charged the state revolving fund and what she was gonna do for me is she's sending me an estimate to what that was. And I'm just gonna run it by Dave, but we'll go from there.
Yeah, we, we did a boring at Brownell's too, uh, they're not cheap.
They're not cheap.
They're not cheap, so that could probably run us like three grand. But uh, to fix it correctly, because we could be into a structural issue here.
Yeah.
Where we're gonna have to go for a structures grant and really build something real there. Cause so you don't wanna get into another Band-Aid that we're gonna spend more money on again in a couple of years. Cause uh, right before, when White Creek wa- was paved, uh, I didn't realize this, but the extensive amount of work was done in this section.
It was all dug out, but it wasn't compacted.
Yeah, and uh, so I think we need to look seriously about doing this correctly by whatever the engineers say.
Absolutely.
How big an area are they bored there, Mike?
Oh, I.
No, I mean, how, from one end to the other, how, how long?
She just wants to do one, one boring somewhere in that section. And then if she, if she can, she wants to do one in the shoulder too, she said, so possibly two.
They're doing it.
I know, it's not, that's not my expertise, but. They um, that's what she does.
Yeah.
Okay, so it sounds like we're paying for that and then the fix is probably gonna be something we need a grant for.
Yeah, I think, maybe, maybe not, I don't know, we'll see what, cause, well, definitely a grant, but I don't know how money wise where that's gonna be. Cause, but there are so many different grant options out there, so. If it gets us through the, the winter, that'll be a lot better by shimming it. Um.
Okay.
Another, for fiscal twenty, I've putting, I'm putting in for um, a Better Back Roads grant on Cross Hill Road. And that'll be ditching, French mattresses, probably a culvert or two and um, there was something else me and Jim talked about on there, I think it was a little, it was a driveway culvert too, because that's where a lot of the problem, that one farm field right there. But through that section from uh where the road flattens out, all the way to the top of the hill is a hydrologically um.
Connected.
Connected section and in that section, we're at for those uh Better Back Road grants. So we're gonna put in for that after July first, we should be getting the paperwork for those grants soon. But that's the one, that's the one grant that we are applying for this year.
That would be for work next year, I assume?
In fiscal twenty.
We're gonna get it done this year.
Yeah.
Apply for the grant and get the work done?
Yeah, well, this is a grant and aid because these are really quick.
These you get the money.
Okay.
You get, um, they give you a deadline, it'll probably be like December thirty first or sometimes they're even July first.
Yeah, many of these I get that are like, especially grants and aid, that you get the grant and it gives you like a hundred and twenty days to finish it.
They're very huge.
Appeal and all the ones we just finished are all, that we got extensions on. But uh, then that was part of uh, the storm work management grant we got, the gentleman identifying the area. So we'll probably be getting uh grant availability for each section as we go along, as long as we keep up on it, if we keep acting, we'll keep getting it.
They, the class we went to at our new garage said that the one, one of the, somebody asked, how, how's the grants? Like grant and aid and Better Back Roads, is that something that's gonna keep going? And the guy said that the money's gone up every year, so, so that's a plus for us. They actually have a couple of different categories too. They have um, an A, B and C, which is all, one, one's like twenty thousand dollars worth of work, one's forty thousand, one's sixty. Usually the sixty is for like six bu- four to six buck culverts, small structures, stuff like that. Um, the town crew, we're gonna go around and we're just, we're gonna do some pavement po- pothole patching within the next week or so. Cause we have a bunch of potholes and wheel ruts and stuff, just in our pavement in general. Um, Bennington's gonna let me use their hot box for a couple of days so that we can get the asphalt right from the plant and then tow it around with our truck and go around and just do pothole patching, fix some wheel ruts and stuff, just some regular maintenance. Um, we did apply for a class two road paving grant, we didn't get it. We got one last year, so it's, we'll just keep applying. Um, so we are, we're gonna replace two, two of our pavement aprons. I'm working on getting an estimate right now so I can let Dave know where we are, but we're gonna replace the apron on North Road and Myers Road. And we're gonna do some shimming on Buck Hill, just above Rod and Gun Club Road. And then there's a spot on East Road just before um.
Reservoir.
Reservoir Road headed south, just now it'd be after. There's some shimming we gotta do in there just to, cause the potholes have been getting worse and just a little preventative maintenance to buy us some time.
And just cause you mentioned East Road, are we on the list to get that repainted, the striping?
Where do we say with that?
All gone from last year?
Yeah.
I think whenever they come around and do the normal statewide striping, they'll do it. But I can make a phone call and see if somebody could speed that up.
We did the paving over there and striped it and then it just all, it all washed away?
Let me uh, let me write that down.
The, the new pavement is so coarse that the paint goes right down into, he says, we always have to do it twice, so.
It was done so late in the year too.
Yeah.
They made us wait so long.
Make sure they know we.
When you do potholes, Mike, I think there's a big one on the uh, uh, that by the burn there in those.
Hidden Valley.
Hidden Valley.
Yeah, there is.
They got two, two acorns on it, cones.
They do now?
There was some cones on it, I think.
Well, there's a guy that parks his um lawn, lawnmower there when he mows, sometimes he puts cones out.
Oh, that's, I thought I seen a pretty good sized pothole there.
I know there is.
Yeah.
We went around looking the other day, there's, there's uh, there's some patching that needs to be done.
Hidden Valley.
Needs a decent day.
Yeah.
Or two. Uh, I think that's for the, this year, that's. Besides just regular grading and ditching and, oh, we are gonna, after the fiscal year, once it, the new fiscal year starts, we're gonna buy um, our allotment of culverts and we are gonna do as many as we can with the town's forces to replace them, there's a long list that's been on, that's been in that little shop for a while, but we need to get on and replace. So in our time of everything, we're gonna squeeze in a bunch of culverts.
Okay. Quite a list.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of work, but by contracting a lot of it out and keeping the guys doing the regular maintenance and stuff, I think we should be, we should be all right.
Now, has any of that progressed as far as a schedule yet? Like, can you tell us when some of that stuff is gonna happen? And the reason I ask is last week we promised that uh, when we have serious construction projects happening on the road, we'd put it up on a website so people will know.
We're gonna close the road.
We won't know that until we're a, a week out of most of these.
So. Let him know so we can put it on the website.
So once all these proj- so once like um, we'll use the um, North Road Myers Road aprons, for example. Say we contracted that out, we have a contractor, I will let you know a week before they start to do that, so you can put that on there, sound, that sound good?
Yeah, yeah, great.
And some of these we're gonna have to, I've been wanting to buy signs that are more notification signs that we can change the date and time. Cause some of these roads, when we get to work on them, like those two aprons, we're gonna have to be posted in advance uh on the roads themselves. When we do West Mountain, cause we're doing two sections on West Mountain and there'll be no traffic for those days we're on it. So we're gonna have to have multiple signs so people don't drive in a mile and they should know like a week in advance, posted on the road too that we're gonna be doing this stuff. Cause some of these projects will just close the road completely.
The, one thing we ha- yeah, one thing we have to purchase immediately is signage. That's something, but I have a list and I've just been kinda waiting.
Cause most of that will be closed during working hours, I'm gonna be open after, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's just like the, the stone pillows, the burritos, whatever you wanna call them, that, the road is closed from, you know, basically seven thirty or eight o'clock till, till four. You know, that, there's no way to, there's no way to get people around those sections, it's just impossible.
Yes, we can do that, that'll be, that's no problem. Um, I think that's all I have to talk about for now.
Okay.
Do you guys have any questions?
I, I just wanna kinda make a comment or something. I realize it's something that we, you inherited, but a while back, a taxpayer made the comment that he travels all over back roads and all that sort of stuff. He thought that Shastberry's roads were the worst thing of everybody and I, I almost have to agree with him. I mean, I've been over Arlington, I was in Dover today, they don't have the potholes, they're rough and everything, but they don't have the potholes. And I'm wondering, is it the material that's on the road or is it the, is it the way the uh, the grader leaves it? And we're gonna get the pack here and, and that sort of stuff, but it, no matter what we do, we end up with potholes and after all this work we're doing on ditching and everything else, I, I wanna get to the bottom of it, why do we have potholes?
I think it, it could be a lot of variables is, I'm gonna start right with this, I want, or is some, some of these towns have a lot less dirt roads than us.
Yes.
So them, no, no, so them maintaining like adding gravel in the spring and at, and in the fall, they're a lot faster with it. A lot of our problem is the material. These roads, these roads are, they don't have good material, some spots they have good material, they don't have enough material.
Okay, well, I, I just hate to.
Um, compaction is definitely gonna be key, cause it's, it's really sad that they are not, they didn't hold up as well as I thought they would, because they were grading nice, the guys were doing a nice job, everything.
The crowns there and everything.
Yeah, it's just some spots, it's like, why are the potholes back?
So I just, I just, talk to your engineers, just ask them what.
What's the cure?
What's the, yeah.
We're treating the symptoms, what's the cure?
And, and maybe we take a section and do some experimenting, you know, until we find out.
Yeah.
Well, something to our, is right now this year, I saw it in the weather the, the other day, we're upwards of an inch and a half of extra rain.
Oh, there's no, there's no doubt, but again, traveling on other roads.
Oh, yeah, no, I don't.
I, I'll say another thing too. We haven't really done a, how would I put it, like a, a really full grade. A lot of these roads, like Cold Spring, for example, by your house, that was like, Ron had a couple of extra hours and just hit it and then moved on. So there are a couple of roads that didn't get a good full grade, there's a lot of roads that have a lot of berms on them where the water's not staying.
Yep.
There's just, there's a lot of variables.
Okay, yep.
What's a French dam?
So a French mattress. It is a.
That's the burrito I've been talking about for the last.
They used to call them burritos and they call them tacos and they call them stone mattresses, now they're French mattresses. It is a three foot, three foot thick of four to six inch stone wrapped in fabric. It's a geotechnical, uh, unwoven fabric and they are pitched to one side of the road or the other, so the water runs freely. They are designed for a spot where a culvert just is, isn't gonna function. So if you have water on both sides of the road and the water just doesn't come and infiltrate into your road and sit, it can actually go through your road. I guess they're designed to take the water that's in the road ahead of them and behind them. They haven't determined what I've, is how far apart they need to be, so that's still experimenting. But they, the ones that we put, that we were just put in on Cider Mill, or both of them are flowing water, so that was a plus.
So it's a three foot diameter?
Yeah, it's three foot thick, usually eight feet wide by however wide the road is. So eight by thirty by three feet of stone. Yeah, I do have a detail, a drawing on it, but I don't.
Are they pre-made?
No.
You have to make them.
Yeah, so you excavate the, the ground, you excavate the road out, then you lay your fabric and then you add the stone. And then you take the fabric and your burrito over top of it, so.
So it is a burrito.
It is a burrito.
This is all derogatory.
And then there's twelve to eighteen inches of gravel on top of it. And then on each end, cause they're fabricated, so you take that stone and you just place the stone on the inlet and the outlet of each side. on the inlet and the outlet of each side. There's kind of a maintenance free culvert. I mean, yeah, you have to clean the ends every now and then.
That makes sense, sure.
But they seem to be pretty popular in this area. A, a lot of towns have been, with their roads have been trying them. The, got ones the guys put in before May on East Road, um, when Weaver was awarded the last project, he wanted to, he never did one before, so we went and looked at the ones on East Road and they were all flowing water, so.
I wanted to ask something though about the traffic on the, the roads you said that, that look good? Backroads that look good in Arlington or wherever it was? What was the traffic like versus ours? I mean, that's gonna determine how beat up the road gets.
Yeah, it definitely does. I think we get quite a bit of traffic on some of these roads. East Road, Horton Hill, Myers Road, I mean.
And the problem with a lot of our dirt roads.
They're connector ones.
Is they're connectors and they're long and they're straight, which just equals speed. And, uh, it, it definitely is a wear factor.
Well, that's, that's a real important question, I think, cause, uh, we hear that a lot and we see that a lot. We drive these roads. Um, we've been talking for a couple of years now before you showed up about increasing the spending on the roads. And I've been talking to people in the community about that, uh, you know, who are complaining about the roads. Okay, well, you know, um, are you willing to, to let me spend more money on the roads? And without exception, the people that I've talked to, their answer is, what are you waiting for? And I guess my question to you is, uh, uh, you know, what, what do you need? What would we do with more money? I've been talking about rebuilding road base, like you're talking about doing on, uh, is it Cold Spring?
Um, Chasbury Hall.
Chasbury Hall, also Cross Hill, aren't we talking about?
Yeah.
Cross Hill, yeah, we're gonna do some rebuilding there.
Yeah, so, uh, I mean, a lot of these roads, uh, from the, the stories I hear, have never been built properly and, uh, let alone have any kind of regular maintenance done to them. So, you know, uh, I guess what, what we wanna know is, you know, if we raise taxes, is rebuilding roads the, where we need to spend the money? Uh, it sounds like your, your list of culvert drainage projects is, is pretty long. Do we need to do that for a while before we, uh, start rebuilding or what's the answer?
Well, that is part of rebuilding. Culverts and drainage would be, would be part of rebuilding a section of road though, because.
When I'm thinking rebuilding, I'm thinking base gravel, fabric, top gravel.
But you still, I'm sure there's drainage in those areas too. You gotta think about all of your, all, all the drainage that goes along with it. I mean, even if you just excavate and put new base and new gravel, or fabric, new base and gravel, you still have to have proper drainage. Still have to have somewhere for the water to go.
Right, well, that base, a lot of that base is, is about drainage, right? I mean, that's why you have all that gravel.
If, if you get water in your road and the gravel's all wet, you can't maintain it anyway. You gotta get the water out of it, when they're doing the drainage, what they're doing. That's the cheapest and best way to do it.
Yeah, but I, you know.
It, it's just throwing money at it, it's not the end.
Drainage is key, drainage is, is a lot of the problem.
Yeah, but a lot of these roads are just dirt trails. I mean, if you dig ditches on dirt trails, there's, there's still gonna be crummy roads, right?
Some of them, yeah, probably wouldn't be the most ideal, but if you, if you rebuild, you still have to add ditching too though. Like if you rebuild a section of road, you can't just dig it out, put new gravel and hope it will.
Oh, sure, sure.
No, you're gonna have, you're gonna have to excavate your ditches.
Water's gotta run somewhere.
That's part of rebuilding.
Every, every area Tim, that they've fixed with French drains and burritos and everything else, since I've been on this board, has not come back and bothered again. As long as we keep track of that and keep doing that, I think that's the cheapest, the best way to fix them. Plus keeping the graders going.
But all I had in here, you know, what we've all talked about here tonight is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which we all happen to have from class three combined, two years here. Um, but just to continue as we're going, we need more money. I mean, uh, the contracting out while our crew is doing their maintenance functions and then money to continue contracting people out, because the quicker we get to, whether it's, and each section is dependent, whether we have to rebuild this section or put burritos in or whatever the name of the month is, you know, drainage, but we need money for that. All these bids, we just spent close to fifty thousand dollars on the five things we just did. We have another one, which is gonna be another twenty-six thousand. Uh, a lot of that's covered on grants and we're hiring contractors to do that. Most of these will have bid out in June to be done this summer, but you know, it's going to use up a hundred thousand dollars, so. Yeah, if we can, if we can, and I know the roads all have problems, but if we get more money and can contract people out, we can start solving problems. A six man crew with seventy miles of road that needs lots of work is going to need some, some help. It's just, I think we're advancing, but if we wanna pick up the pace.
Well, I, you know, I, I, I have limited experience clearly, but you know, the section of road that has stuck in my mind is between, is Horton Hill between, uh, Rollin and, uh, Cold Spring. Where I, where I go along, along and, you know, um, five years ago, it turned to mud. It was impassable. We went in, you know, two feet of base gravel, fabric, tops, topsoil. And that section of road, which has got, uh, Cold Spring on one side and, and, uh, wetland on the very property on the other, right by your house, it never hits a pothole. That, that section of road is always pristine. And I've always taken that to mean because we went from something that was, you know, wet and, you know, whatever, to rebuilt with road base in there. We didn't put any new culverts in there, we put.
Where are you talking?
Uh, Horton Hill just before it hits Cold Spring. Between Rollin and, uh.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Tinkham or Colter, whatever it's called.
Yeah, through that section. But they did excavate the ditches, they, you know, that does have a decent ditch that runs down through there on that one side. I'm just, all I was saying was.
Part of it, you gotta have the, you know, the ditches for the water to run off the road. But isn't the, the, the base, that's propagating water too, when you've got that gravel?
Most definitely it is, and, and if it is a, if it is a, a free draining base, it definitely helps. It definitely does. But what I meant by rebuilding is when you're rebuilding, like if we did pick a section there, then that was, we were gonna rebuild. There's adding a culvert to divert the water in some spots or replacing culverts that are there, cause there are so many undersized culverts, plugged culverts all over the place. That's all I was meaning. That's part of rebuilding to me.
Yeah, and I think, you know, if you've got a lot of water, you probably, you need that too. You know, the, the route, the, the road base can't pump the water from one side either fast enough, you gotta put in a culvert. But it seems like just about everywhere needs that gravel base.
There's a lot of sections, most definitely.
Well, I guess what I'm coming down to is, um, people want us to fix the roads and.
Let's do it.
The people that I'm talking to are willing to pay more to get it done.
Didn't we just spend thirty-nine thousand five hundred fifty for a roller for the John Bear? Couple weeks ago? Now that's for the roads, right?
Yeah. We're trying.
Yeah.
Has that showed up yet?
No, actually it got delayed unfortunately, so it'll be here the first week in June.
I talked to the guy today and he said, first week in June.
And I'll point out one other thing, we're talking about dirt roads. We have another twenty miles of paved roads, some of which are in pretty desperate state too. And those are much more expensive than, so there is a need here.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple paved roads that are gonna be showing some bad signs here soon.
And we don't get grants for all these paved roads, so.
No.
And the critical thing with the paved roads, I mean, some of them I think we've probably already waited too long. And when we do it, we're gonna have to repave them. But I know that in some places where we've thought ahead, like on Harvest Hill last year, the year before, we went in with a shim coat that we do, you know, and it extends the life of it. And, you know, to the extent that we can do that, that's money well spent. But I have a feeling a lot of them, we're looking at repaving them whenever we can afford it.
And Buck Hill's a prime example. And we're gonna, we're gonna Band-Aid it this year, but, uh, it really needs to be done from beginning to end. And that's gonna be a two-year project with state grants. Um, we're on our, what, we've gotten three grants to get as far as we've gotten on East Road. And we have two sections to go. We need two more state grants. It's just so expensive to do this. Each section is, people remember, was close to a hundred and seventy-five, two hundred thousand dollars.
And White, White Creek round, there's.
Yeah, well, we have, remember, White Creek was originally planned to go to the New York border and we stopped at Rollin, I believe, you know, and.
You stay there to that though, right?
Yeah, well, this is where, yeah, but each, each year, if we get it, is, you know, it all goes to one paving project. Because it's just so expensive. So, yeah, it is, it's another aspect, cause I know gravel is a hot topic, but that pavement is lingering right behind it. It's Birch Hill Road is in, in bad shape.
Oh, uh, I wanna, David and I talked about this. I'd like to go up with you and take a look at Birch Hill Road. And with that, you get up halfway up the hill, or not up the hill, but halfway up the road.
Okay.
And I'd like to look at, uh, where that flattens out, see about, what you think about turning that to dirt.
We can take a look at it.
Cause you don't have the traffic up there and it could save us some money maybe.
We'll see.
Yeah.
We'll check, we'll look at it and go from there.
Well, no, but I mean, like I said, the grade change is up there.
Yeah.
So.
All I can say is that Birch Hill is not thick at all. That pavement is very thin.
Speaking of pavement, I had to get off.
It's alright, it's part of our roads.
Yeah, what was going on with Route Seven? I had a, you were saying it was splitting in the middle? We were talking about our.
Oh, it's sloughing off there, we're on the concrete section. The day that the lady met me on White Creek Road, she was, uh, her and, um, Chris from the state were headed to look at that too. So she's doing the same thing there too.
Same problem.
Same problem.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Concrete road's taking off.
State is aware of the problem, um, they are studying it, it's not an easy fix. It will cost them a lot of money when they, when they do figure out what needs to be done.
Similar thing happened on, um, Route Nine, just before the town of Wilmington. Where they had traffic, I don't know if you were over Route Nine last summer? They had the, um, Jersey barriers with the two traffic lights. The concrete road base took off right there and they lost it. And then they, that sped up the fix, but the same thing's happening here.
It's a concrete.
Yeah, underneath it, yeah. Yes.
The thing Kenny was saying, it's not, it's not as wide as the road is now that's on top of it, because cars were narrower.
That's why they did that rot fill, it's called, where there's the four foot stretch of pavement you see all the way up the shoulders. They call it a rot fill. Yeah.
It's called a cow jump.
Yeah, it is.
Exactly.
Not a big fan. Maybe rot fill, then pave over it, but. It, it did hold up pretty good, but it's not, uh, it's not a fix.
Okay. Is that enough to keep you busy?
Yeah, I would say so. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Good night, Mike.
You too.
Uh, Tim, just, uh, if possible, work on the schedule, um, Merth Snow's here. You wanted to speak a little, a little bit about the delinquent taxes?
Yes, Merth, come on up, love to hear from you. We'd love to hear from anybody that brings us money, instead of this guy that just wants to spend it.
I talked to, uh.
Money well spent.
Melanie and I talked to, uh, David. A situation, I've, I've been doing this since ninety-one. And for seven weeks, up to May fifteenth, I think it was, I got just under ten thousand dollars in. It's nothing. Well, I sent out statements and I did a lot of writing. And, uh, at this point, there are twenty in Kevin O'Toole's hands. They sent out a thirty day notice. I've had anywhere from twenty to twenty-five sent out at different times. When it gets actually to the tax sales, you know, you have three, four, five, there's a lot of people. Suddenly can come up with some money or live in agreement. These are people that, you look at the statement, you don't see a payment on there. So, uh, and I don't know, there was no sound, uh, almost a seven, so I didn't know we discussed the delinquents or not.
Just very broadly, so you have the numbers.
So I just wanted you to, um, on May twentieth, well, I got seven thousand dollars, or ten, almost ten thousand dollars in seven weeks and I got ten thousand dollars in two days. The balance on the twentieth is a hundred and twenty-six thousand eight hundred, which is higher than last year, which was ninety-four thousand five hundred. But the delinquents were thirty-nine thousand dollars more. So when you get all said and done, comparing the two years, uh, I'm sixty-seven hundred dollars ahead of last year. It hasn't seemed like it was going very good, but I know that I've stimulated interest. So, uh, I just wanted you to know that, because this, uh, last week, I didn't turn any money into the town. I usually, in two weeks, and, uh, but I had, during those seven weeks, I had deposits of twelve hundred dollars, fifteen hundred dollars. And I, I took over ten thousand dollars to the bank today. And, uh, I know as soon as these letters get out. I started early, last year we ran the tax sale, um, in October. And I figured, I gave it earlier jump, it was just too many people that aren't doing anything. I've had, heard a few calls, uh, trying to say, well, what can we work out? And I've been trying to do that since last November, but. So I, I don't know what you might've been hearing about delinquents. And you look up on the board sometimes and see delinquent taxes, gee, this seems like it's smaller than it used to be. And it's probably true, but I just wanted you to know that, uh, by June thirtieth, I expect everything to be much smoother.
Good, good. No, what I remember is a couple, a month or two ago, that we noticed a bump in delinquent tax collections, does that?
I noticed it too.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, we were wondering if you were out.
I put, put my finger on exactly what was going on and, um, because when they were sixty days old, and I sent statements out, certain ones got a message on there, about their sixty days. And then a couple of months later, you're four months behind. And then, um, late in April, I sent a much stronger message that as of such and such a date, this would be going to the attorney.
Yeah. Well, no, we certainly appreciate it and, uh.
Yeah, they know, they know that when I send out the first warrant to them, I attach a payment agreement that explains exactly what may happen if they don't do as they've agreed or they don't do anything. And, you know, they don't seem to. So I'm not knowing if anything was said, I'm looking at the screen and I can't hear anything. So I said, I think I'll come down.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, um, I think two or three years ago, you came before the select board and just said, I usually come and just ask your permission to, uh, send them onto the thing. I don't have to because it's the law, is that?
I have, the law is that if I have tax sales, I have to get your permission.
Okay.
I, I also let those letters go out.
Yeah, okay.
We cut it way down and then I come to you and we can look at the list and you can tell me.
Yeah, there is, I, I know there was something you had to get our vote on, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And if you've got a question, I'm always available.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, we were gonna talk about a couple of, um, preferred solar site applications. Bima is not here. I guess we can wait and see if he shows up. I, uh, Chris, you're here to talk about that as well, right?
Or to, or to listen.
Okay, okay. Well, um, I don't know why we couldn't go ahead and take them up. Recall that Shasbury has a very liberal policy about solar siding and, um. Recall that Shasbury has a very liberal policy about solar siting, and, um, the Select Board is on record as saying, you know, solar is welcome pretty much anywhere. We do not have designated areas where we don't have, where we don't allow solar. And so, um, if, uh, the Board wants to, uh, to take a look at these, we can, or if you want to wait and hear from Bima, we can, we can do that.
How serious is Bima about putting something in there, or is this just, is he just on a fishing expedition? Or does he have a contract with a customer?
No, I think these are serious applications that have moved to the point of coming to us, saying, uh, asking for the preferred site designation.
Okay.
Which, uh, I think is, uh, one of the hoops they have to jump through in order to do a community solar project of that type.
Where are they, where are they talking?
Yeah, I guess I'm concerned about neighbors and all that sort of stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Trying to think which of the three documents on each of these is the one that we really prefer to, to look at. So this one is called T and M Solar.
That's already done, right?
And, uh, this is. Okay, so this is on State Line Road, right here. And I remember driving out there, it's a pretty lonesome spot, and the proposed solar is at the back of this property here. So that's one of them.
Obviously, this is out of them outside of State Line Road, right?
Yes.
Trying to get oriented there. Who, who's the customer? Whose property is it going on?
See if I can figure that out.
Looks like Paquins, yes.
Yeah, Paquin at two eighty-nine State Line Road.
TR Paquin, okay, yeah.
Yeah? Okay.
Oh, okay.
And then, uh, TNT, I think this is the other plan. And this one is, um, harder to get your bearings on, but I went out and took a look at this one, too. The address is listed as Buck Hill Road. Come on. Come on. I think the plot is so big that it takes a minute for it to, for me to be able to move it there now. So this is Stevens Lane here.
This is on a property below the water plant.
Yeah.
It's down parallel, it goes down the slope parallel to the Howard property.
Okay.
Yeah, you, it's, oh, here's on.
What's that clear cutting across from Billy Mertens?
That, I believe, is because it's shading the solar panels that are down there.
That are on already established?
Yeah, they're already there.
Okay, yeah, this file is so huge that everything I'm doing is happening about a minute after I move it. So here's the site. So it's right in there. And it's, I was driving around trying to find it, it's, you can't really see it from anywhere.
Way up the hill.
Way up there.
Yeah. And it's all overgrown farmland, abandoned pasture, first growth forest, buckaroo brush. We walked through there, um, some other planning commission this, this couple of years ago. You know, it was open land at one time, but you're going to have a lot of clearing involved.
Is anybody around where that site is that's going?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's my biggest.
I went up there myself, trying to get a handle on what, because this is a five thousand, fifteen thousand kilowatt array. It's a pretty significant size. And, um, I judged it, you could hardly see it from anywhere. There was, I mean, it, it's not next to anything except the water plant. And where it's visible from, well, it might be visible from West Mountain Road across the valley or something like that. But I don't think it's going to be visible close in.
It's something you'd have to look for to see it.
Well, it'll be a big clearing. You know, I mean, it's vegetation.
So it's going to be staring at everybody.
It's going to be staring at somebody, but it just doesn't have very.
From across the valley.
It doesn't have very.
That's what I was trying to get at.
Yeah.
And I would, uh, I would remind the Board that last year, we passed a resolution, uh, saying that we supported the transition of the economy from fossil fuels to renewable ener, energy, and that we would not seek to put restrictions on renewable energy infrastructure any more than we would any other type of building.
Well, that's, that, that's, that's my point. Normally, if somebody's putting up a building, you're, the neighbors are informed, you know, all that sort of stuff. Does that happen with a solar array?
Um, are, uh, abutters notified about this? Uh, that is a good question, I don't know.
I, I think they should be heard somehow.
Is that considered a temporary structure or permanent?
Permanent, twenty-five years. That, that's my only concern.
Is have the neighbors been, been allowed to participate in this process? That's something I guess we should know, but I don't.
Is that going to be for the public service board? Does that is statewide?
It's a public service board process.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think it bypasses local on purpose. Well, we get to sign off on this.
Right.
That this is a preferred site, and it'll come to you, and then it'll come to us at the planning commission.
Okay.
And we will sign our names on the line, put a date.
Okay.
So, you know, this is our control of shaping our community.
Okay.
You know, I've watched Bennington try and tackle this problem.
Yep, right.
And it sounds like you all have, too, but they've had very mixed success, and they've been the court an awful lot.
Yeah.
So, you know, this doesn't seem like
Yeah.
something that you can just slap down a preferred site map and say, okay, you're here, no, no good.
I, I just.
Okay, I think here's the answer to your question, which is in the letter and the paperwork, where, uh, abutters have been notified by certified managers.
All right, that's.
Yeah.
I, I just don't want to say it goes in and all of a sudden a neighbor is suing us and then because we gave them permission without them knowing and all that sort of stuff, okay? That's fine.
Good. So, the question before us is, are we willing to, uh, sign the letter that says this is a preferred site? Which is the, the official state designation from the PUC process, that it's not a site that we specifically don't want it to happen in. Uh, that's what Bennington has spent a lot of time, is defining where the preferred sites are. And, uh, we, uh, by and large, in the planning commission, has, has, uh, agreed that, um, there are really no areas that we specifically don't want to build, uh, solar.
I make, I make a motion, however you want to say it.
Okay, so we have, uh, we'll do them one at a time. We'll start with the, uh, T and M Preferred Site Designation Letter for the T and M Solar Project at, um, two eighty-nine State Line Road. So we have a motion from Art to designate this project as a preferred site under net metering rule.
Seconded.
Seconded by Tony. So any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Ken, did I hear you?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So that motion is approved, five zero zero. And the other one? For the TNT Solar Site. Uh, it's listed as three twenty-six VT Route seven A. We have a motion to approve preferred site designation.
So move.
Moved by Art.
Seconded.
Seconded by Tony. Any more discussion on this one? All in favor, say aye.
I just got one.
Discussion?
Uh, Jared Clausen, he's the one that was growing the pumpkins. Is this somewhere's around the area where his pumpkins are being grown, or it's like, okay? But he's, he's a, he's a relative, he's a descendant of who owns that one that way. Okay, yeah, sorry.
All right. Anything else? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? So, the TNT site is also designated a preferred site by about a five zero zero.
Okay.
Very good. Okay, it looks like one signature will do it, so I'll print these out and sign it then. All right. Playground. Dina Ruby from our Recreation Committee.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you. I figured it was time to get everybody up to date on what's been going on.
Yeah. You have the garbage cans.
So.
We give you your, uh,
These are.
Five thousand dollars worth of garbage cans.
Shem to care.
Ken is quite interested in our garbage cans.
Are they coming in soon?
Yeah, well, they're on order like everything else.
I bet you're going to pay.
I have never seen.
Aren't they, and they're all handcrafted?
Jewans.
Right.
Uh, this is the play equipment that, um, he had decided on. And it's, uh, going to be accommodating ages two to twelve.
Yeah.
So we have a nice range there. And in addition to that, we're going to have a swing set, isn't that cool?
That's very funny.
It's kind of like, what's that?
Yep, that kid is swinging way too hard.
Oh, my goodness.
It's for rental supervision.
That explains why they're all white.
And the best part is this manufacturer has the best warranty in the industry, and we have it in writing.
Oh, really?
Okay. And that warranty is for how long?
Fifty years.
Yeah, I mean, it's a very good, it's a really good warranty, and, uh,
Limited warranty.
Is this coming in, Dave? The play equipment?
No, the, we, the Board has to approve a purchase.
Oh.
That's what we're here.
Can you hear that, folks?
How many hundred thousands is this going to cost?
I'm sorry.
How many hundred thousands?
Well, believe it or not, this, this Alpine set is fifty percent off right now.
Ooh.
So the
Original.
The fancy thing here, the Alpine, uh, we can purchase for fifteen thousand dollars now. It lists for thirty thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And just as some background here, we've been looking at a lot of play equipment.
Yeah.
And, uh, we actually changed what we were going to buy, because we were kind of buying things that maybe don't suit today's kids, because that's actually the color scheme of what we're talking about.
That's, yeah.
That's, that's it. And we don't want to get too many things for over there.
Kind of like what they have at the school now, sure.
Yeah, and we don't want to make the park at Howard too large, because it's, it's a limited use, but when people are at the pavilion or kids, the older kids are playing, it's a fair amount of kids to do, so. And as you remember, when we had these parks inspected a few years ago, we had to remove all the play equipment, because it was all deemed unsafe.
Lot of kids on Cleveland Avenue now.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Better buy it before they change their mind.
Yeah, well, we have till the twenty-third. Uh, it's fifteen thousand for this, uh,
Do you need the specs that you sent?
No, I have everything. Fifteen thousand for that, four thousand for the swing set. We get free shipping on this, on the Alpine, if we sign by the twenty-third.
Free.
And we're tax exempt. They made an offer of eight thousand dollars to install it, which I'm, I'm kind of thinking is a wee bit high. Uh, that was their maximum price, you know, depending on weather and everything. But I'm, I'm not sure that we couldn't do a lot better than that.
Does that include all the mulch and everything?
No, the mulch is completely separate, we have to excavate, and I have to do the calculation, but, uh, we'll probably need about seven thousand dollars worth of, uh, safety material.
Yeah, because we'll, we'll do the ground preparation and also the surface material. We have to get special surface material.
This may not be an accurate thing, but I think you're required to have a handicapped one as part, as one of them, with a seat where they strap them in.
Yeah, strap seat.
It doesn't show it?
No, it doesn't.
No, no.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah. These are the real basic seats they have on their little.
Okay.
How did we ever live this long?
What?
Dumpster on site.
Can you imagine a slide?
Dumpster on site.
Yeah, that's kind of standard for all this stuff, and, and we would.
That, that's for down here on, on Cleveland Avenue?
No, no, this, this is, this is for construction of this. If, if we use their contractor, the contractor's requirement is access to water, which we have, access to electricity, which we have, and a dumpster.
That's only if he installs it.
That's only if, if we agree to this, this is not part of it. This is an option. I said, well, how much to install, they have professionals all over, who can do this.
Well, this is extra on top of what the playground equipment costs.
Yeah, yeah, this is only if we want to do this, we could probably find someone to construct this thing for less. I don't want, uh, DPW to have anything to do with it, because they have other things they can do that they shouldn't be doing. And keep in mind that even for the equipment here, uh, I'm sitting on a ten thousand dollar grant from the state to buy this playground equipment anyway. So this cost has ten thousand off of it already. So we, we're.
I wonder if, uh, if for liability reasons, we want to let them, uh,
Well, that was my thought, is that if it's installed by their people who build playgrounds all the time, if something happens, we could just go back to them.
They can't say you didn't screw all the bolts in.
And I think that that's going to affect the warranty, it's got to be professionally.
It's got to be.
Oh, yeah.
We would have to certify to them that it was put in, or we're not going to have a fifty-year warranty.
Okay.
Well, I think the warranty's on the installation, it's on
The equipment.
The equipment, that's right.
Right, but if something starts to jiggle loose or rust, they could say you didn't do it right.
They're going to say they parked it too much, we didn't do it.
That's right.
That's why you don't have, like, a DPW crew assemble the thing, because you're, you're avoiding the warranties.
Right, right.
Which we don't want to do.
Because the only option I'm saying is that maybe we could find, I'd have to go find a playground.
Buy it, it's eight thousand bucks.
Well, one reason why insurance is so high, and we had insurance inspection of the parks, is because uh, one of the prime areas of lawsuits against municipalities and schools is injuries on the playgrounds.
Playgrounds.
And, uh, that's why you spend the extra couple of thousand to do it right. Because it sounds like a good idea, you know, and I know I took a little flak when I took down a few pieces of equipment. But, you know, when you have your insurance company come, because something's troubling us, and they say, you know, you need to remove that like now, uh, you know, you have to follow, you have to follow the rules. And if someone gets hurt because something like Dee said, this thing starts shimmying, and someone falls off and gets injured, they're going to go, well, who put this in?
Yeah, I'm starting to think, you know, saving a few thousand dollars, two or three thousand dollars might not be worth risking the wa, the warranty, or risking, you know, that something's not done right.
Yeah, because in total here, the total bill there, twenty-eight thousand, six oh seven, eighteen, we have ten thousand from the state, so we're talking about eighteen thousand, which is coming out of the bequest of the town of, what, the seventy thousand?
I think so, yeah.
About seventy thousand. So, uh, it may be worth our while to have this done by the company.
Yeah. Is that, is that, it says shipping and handling twenty-one hundred dollars, but I thought it was free.
Well, we get the, the, above it is the line where it takes fifteen hundred and fifty-five. Well, we get the, the, above it is the line where it takes fifteen hundred and fifty-five off the one item.
Right.
Okay.
And then that's the rest, uh, we got an estimate on the original things we were buying, coming from Colorado, this stuff's coming from Texas, this stuff from Colorado was like seven thousand dollars to ship.
Oh, yeah.
And it was just like, holy cow.
You can't find anything closer? Nobody builds the equipment closer?
It's, we've looked at an awful lot of stuff.
Not for half price.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's half price, we're paying an awful lot for that warranty. Where'd this stuff come from, for the Shasberry Playground?
Oh, I don't know, that was built long before I got here.
It's a long time ago.
Well, I was just wondering if they, same company still in business, are they local, I mean, as far as like in a hundred mile radius, or?
I didn't see anybody in locally who manufactures this stuff.
Nobody in all.
People will distribute it, but they don't manufacture it. And we get a, we've gone through a lot of catalogs and things.
We have.
But, I mean, yeah, I mean, it sounds like a lot, but when we first started looking at it, it's real easy to pay thirty thousand dollars for something like that.
That's right.
We're getting that and the swing set, uh, and, you know, put together.
Yep.
For just under thirty.
So, you want a motion?
We should be getting the water fountain too, correct?
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
The water fountain?
Yeah.
Is coming.
Yes, we'll talk about that next.
I don't know, they got a big water problem, that, that one.
So you want to vote, we, we need, we need a vote for this, is that?
Yeah, I'm looking for a motion to accept, uh, to accept this quote from Alpine for playground equipment and installation for twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and seven dollars.
Okay, so move, but I do want to.
Moved by Art.
Seconded.
Seconded by Tony, discussion?
Yeah, let's have some discussion on it. The motion was with the installation, so.
Yes.
I guess everybody, I just want everybody to be comfortable with spending that much, I, but I, I agree. You can avoid the, the warranty. Warranty and, and a lot of.
Now, now you know this by talking to the people, they, they've told you that, or it's in, it's in the paper?
It's in the paperwork.
Okay, so if anybody, no matter how qualified does it, other than their people, avoids the warranty, so.
Oh, I don't know whether, well, no.
If I find another completely qualified person that they agree with, then the warranty, but, but then we're back up to thousands of dollars. And remember this eighty-eight twenty, as the person explained to me, is kind of based on the worst-case scenario, where they get here, the team gets here, and they get delayed, or something isn't right, or the site isn't prepared correctly, so. Uh, this isn't a hard number, it's a max number, but it's not a hard number. It could be less.
It'd be cheaper.
Yeah.
No.
We won't have problems.
They subcontracted out. They got a group that they put up. Two in the country. Two in the country. Two in the country.
Yeah.
But no.
Yeah.
Any more discussion? All in favor of accepting the quote from Alpine for playground equipment for twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and seven dollars? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? That motion is approved by zero zero. Congratulations.
Excellent.
For getting playground equipment.
I'm very excited.
Thank you, I know you and Dave.
Good.
Thank you, because I know these two have been going around for a year.
At least.
Yeah.
Yeah, at least a year on this.
Yeah, it's crazy expensive, how much.
It's, it is.
It's crazy, it really is, you know, you finally decide that, yeah, this is really gonna look good there, and then you contact the company, and the shipping is exorbitant, you say, we can't be spending our useful money on getting from point A to point B. It's, we've gotta figure something else out, and luckily Dave found this particular company, and the prices were much, much better, and the warranty.
Yeah.
The best.
That's a good. It is, it is fifty percent off, and we do have a ten thousand grant on top of it, so.
Didn't do nothing.
It's hard to say we're getting this fairly cheaply, but in the scope of buying playground equipment, we're getting this fairly cheaply.
You got any idea what?
Still sticker shock.
What, you know, if anything did for the.
You should look.
So it's three hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Oh, seventy, eighty thousand, one hundred and twenty?
It's, it's crazy. Our garbage. You know, eyes with Ken, I kept phoning him, it's like, yes, I'm not getting them for.
Better think of that, but you're crazy.
Tell the common sense that she gets them.
Yeah. I'm sure the judge will.
Hey, I grew up in a playground with, with steel structures and cement, that's right. You know what?
Gee, you're still here.
I'm fine, yeah.
Alright, so we're good to go then?
Yes.
You wanna tell us about our water fountain?
It's coming.
It's coming.
It's coming.
The water fountain is, uh, is actually got back ordered, of course.
I can't believe that, really.
Uh, it's supposed to be here the last week in, in May, which I guess is next week now, all of a sudden. And Northeast will be installing it, it's gonna go into the, uh, uh, the snack bar building, instead of the bathroom building, because the pipe is, is a lot more accessible there.
Oh, good.
Uh, and also has a good camera on that side, so.
Okay.
It's a good angle for the camera, but it was just cheaper, frankly, it was just cheaper to put it on that building. The plumber brought that up to us, uh, so we'll just go that way.
Okay. Can you see it from the bathrooms, because you come out of the bathroom?
Yep, when you come out, it'll be right on the other building, right across from here.
Good, yeah, I've been thirsty for a couple of years.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, yeah, and the, and the, you know, it is all, it's all, you, uh, potable water, you know, with the new well.
Yeah, we got, got a new well, let's drink out of it.
Yeah.
We've got lots and lots of water down at the park.
Yeah, well, that'll be the next project, and, and we've already been discussing that one, that, uh, uh, we'll, I'll talk about with the committee, but we might have a, a twenty thousand dollar project in there alone, because we have to move water, we have to fix that whole thing.
Yeah.
And we have to have an accessible bridge over that swale, because, uh, the one we put there to get past the water, you know, it's not suitable for anything with pedestrian traffic, and we should really be able to access the rear with, uh, an ambulance.
Ambulance.
Oh, that's, that's right.
So, yeah, we've been, Mike and I have been staring at that, thinking of fixes, so.
Maybe one of those stone crepes?
Well, it could be, it's a crepe or a burrito, whatever fits in there, but, uh, yeah, then you can stone over the top of it, but it, we need to move water there.
Yes.
It's getting kind of bad.
Yes.
And our well has overcapacity, so it's dumping in there too, so.
Okay.
Wow.
Well, yeah, let's get, uh, get back to us on that, because we don't want people, um, going to our park and, uh, seeing a swamp, where there's supposed to be a field.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Because I don't know if you've been down lately.
Not lately.
Down where Tilner Trail is, the beginning of Tilner Trail, um, where the soccer fields are. The water shooting out of there is unbelievable, I guess there's a hose or a pipe there?
Yeah, that's the overflow from the wellhead.
Like all rainfall.
We have, uh.
Oh, my goodness, I've never seen anything like that.
Quite a lot of flow from our well, almost, like, more than we could possibly use, we really hit gold there, I think.
We really did.
Wow.
Anyway, I thank you very much, gentlemen, and I'm glad that this is, is going to happen.
Thank you very much.
For all your hard work.
I'm excited, I'll have to tell the committee when we meet on Friday.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll get back.
Thanks, you too.
Okay, we, uh, we did not get the cellular policy circulated, I haven't had a chance to read it, so we're going to, uh, put that off.
Have, have you had some talks with some of them?
Yeah, oh, yeah, 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 I think that's pretty much resolved after a few discussions, but we'll go forward with it, and frankly, again, I have to move things from one thing to another thing to the drop box of the meeting, and I left this in meetings for two thousand nineteen, but never moved it into tonight's meeting, so we'll, we'll, we'll pick it up next week.
Okay, alright. So it probably, even if it's in the drop box, it, I don't always remember to look there, so.
Yeah, I know, it's not in the day.
That it's there.
Yeah.
Uh, anything to say about Kohol or the garage?
Uh, just minor things, we haven't heard from, uh, the department of prisons yet on the furniture, but it should be here in a few weeks, it's, uh, four to, four to eight weeks, so. And, uh, Kohol, the parking lot and drive and access rotor finished, uh, the last little working of the site work, so we can sign off on that, uh, should have been finished today, or maybe it'll go until tomorrow. Uh, then we was just collecting the different manuals and instruction things, and our project's done. You know, we still have, uh, I think, off the top of my head, maybe sixty thousand left for Russell, which we're just sitting on until someone finally signs off on this, you know, but, uh, for all intents and purposes, everything's completely done. Uh, and what we're going to do is the first week in June, probably, uh, two or three of the crew will start moving things in, and then we'll talk about having an open house, maybe, uh, the end of June or beginning of July.
Site work done for where we're gonna be storing gravel and, and, uh, uh, you know, stone and that sort of stuff?
Yeah, that down there is, is all our responsibility.
Yeah.
We already have stuff stored down there.
Okay, so.
Yeah, uh, now, there, there was a minor thing in the final inspection that we did with MSK, have to move one, one of the ditches over, you know, like a foot, but, you know, it's all in the plan.
Okay.
We had to go around some rocks, and I didn't want to get into pulling out rocks again, so.
Okay.
We just moved it.
And the, the, the final six inches of gravel or whatever it is?
Yeah, it's all in, it's all done.
It's already happened?
Yeah, it's all done. Uh, so essentially, it's ready, it's ready to go. Uh, we still haven't signed the last thing, but, I mean, we've already had two state meetings there, we just haven't kind of moved in yet. Uh.
So the meeting on the twenty-ninth, on the twenty-ninth, supposed to be the first meeting at the town garage?
Meeting on the twenty-ninth.
Yeah, I'm just going by an old note.
Oh, 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 right, 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 yeah, that was the first meeting, yeah, that was in, one of the first meetings we had, that was the foreman's meeting, I believe. And then.
It's not for us.
Was it, was it a state road crew meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, uh, we hosted, uh, a meeting for the state there last week, yeah, yeah, so, uh, that's about it, we're just at the end. I do get some questions about the swap shed still, and, uh, it's not that we're getting rid of it, but we have to have a better approach to it, and we need to figure out how we're gonna keep it from turning into the last one.
I think if you just stick with books.
If we could stick with books, other people want us to put more things in it. Uh, the other problem is, our employee's job is to sell stickers.
Right.
Cam has specifically has nothing to do with the swap shed, which, whose origin, I'm not quite sure of, but, you know, it had some points, it's just, you know, I think as anybody who went in before we tore it down, and I know from the last six years, I saw the same stuff on the shelves for years. And, uh, when I've worked up there, when Shelley was out or whatever, it is amazing, you go, you sell a few stickers, you turn around, there's something in front of the door. And it's like, how did I, you know, because Shelley always says, well, you don't see people, and you're, like, how do you not see something, but then you go there, and you're like, how did that happen? There's something there, and it's usually a bike without any, any pedals or spo- you know, it's, it's, it's stuff that frankly, we, we wind up, the taxpayers wind up paying for, because nothing's free there.
Right.
If we throw it in dumps, we pay by weight, and, uh, you know, there's other ways to dispose of things, or take it down to goodwill and let them take it.
They have the same problem.
They're rejecting the stuff that winds up in our swap shed.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, if it's glass or whatever, recycling is a big issue. Uh, so we want to create something, I'm talking to Shelley about it, Shelley really wants the books back, the books are a great idea.
Yeah.
But I think by minimizing the size of it, and maybe combining it with where we have our, our little snow tractor up there, and finding a shed where we can combine a much reduced, uh, swap shed, where you would walk in literally right by Shelley, so if you're carrying your broken foosball table buyers, you're probably gonna, you know, question.
I think that's the right idea, is, uh, combining the swap shed with, um, Shelley's shed, so that she's there, she, she sees everything.
Yeah, and then it'd be like, no, we, we can't take that, I mean, you know, I, I went up to, this really, like, filthy toaster oven was put in there, it's like, wouldn't be good.
Well, the reality is, it's difficult to get rid of stuff, period.
Mm-hmm.
We're running into that problem with the transfer station now.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I did the toxic, the hazardous waste thing, I got out of, luckily, somebody came down the line, it was a two-hour wait.
Yeah.
And that was, it was ridiculous, I mean, it, you know, and it used to move a whole lot faster.
Yeah.
But I realized the problem, you know, that it's more and more difficult to recycle anything, and you can't just dump it. Uh, so consequently, it's on the side of the road, it's in a swap, swap set, it's up in, you know, up in Gloucester Berry, it's, it's everywhere.
Yeah, and, and just to go on, on the hazardous household waste day, uh, the discussion's already begun to remove, uh, that vendor, uh, because it, apparently, they were working at a glacial pace too.
Oh, it was, it was crazy.
And, you know, we can't have that, there was, the cars were all the way backed out to East Road, I understand.
Yeah, all the, it was all the way from, uh, Willow Road to, yeah, I mean, it was insane.
Yeah.
What time were you there?
I was there, I, I actually went by at nine o'clock, I figured I would go into town, do my errands, and come back, the line was longer, so I lit, I got on Willow Road, and luckily, guy walked down from the, whoever was doing, and he said, it's a two-hour wait, what do you have? And I just had a couple of things, but I, you know, I had to be in line.
Yeah.
So I turned around and sit in my garage.
Yeah, and that's, uh, it's a shame when it happens that way, and, uh, only, I think the final number was, uh, two hundred and twenty, uh, people came and some combined households, but why, it was not reasonable for it to take that long.
Why, you know, when we did it here, you, all you did was pull up, they unloaded your car, and then you, you were off.
Yeah, yeah, it's the second complaint of, of this current vendor.
Yeah.
Uh, the one in Dorset, I understand, went much faster, I'm not sure who did that one, but, uh, it will be the topic of discussion at our next, uh, SWIP meeting, that, you know, this is not acceptable, and maybe it's gonna turn out that, that that's location isn't acceptable.
Well, it doesn't encourage anybody to.
No, discourages people fucking coming.
Yeah, yeah.
You know?
Yeah, I'm, we're not on my way to do all of that, and.
Yeah.
It's impossible.
I wondered if we got more traffic because the last one was in Dorset, which, um, is less populated than Bennington, and for, because I was thinking, I had paint to get rid of, but I didn't want to drive to Dorset to do it, and then, you know, then this one's in Bennington, where every, you know, we essentially got a year's worth instead of six months' worth.
This line didn't move.
Yeah.
This line did not move.
That's what I've heard.
Yeah, I mean, you literally just put it in park.
Yeah, Rob, Robert Brown, who's on Route seven A here, I worked with him, and he sat in that line, that's how I, when you were sitting there saying, I'm like, yep, yep, I heard all of that.
It didn't move at all.
We're required to have, uh, these have to be a certain distance from each other, the mag, need everybody in the county, that's why there's one in Dorset and one in Bennington, and I do a remote one for Woodford. So it's, it's kind of, uh, we're kind of stuck on locations, because we can't move the Dorset one down, because then we're too far from the other end. Um, I, from what I gather from, from people who were there, is, is the main fault, it may not be the right location, but the main fault seemed to have been at the very, very slow pace of this contractor, which is not acceptable.
No.
Because it really, the one, you know, I only worked on one when we were doing them here, and, yeah, those guys moved right along.
Ooh, ooh, ooh.
Yeah, people were barely, and we were just moving cars, just, just go, so, I, I don't know, but we're gonna have that discussion, because that's just not right, and people will, if I try and do the right thing, and I'm sitting in my car on a Saturday morning for two and a half hours, getting rid of a tray of paint next to me, well.
Like a day off.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it was the same.
It's not the way to do it. We have discussed too, having a permanent, uh, AKW facility, um, but that's in the early stages, because that would be nice too, combine it with either Casella, one of the Casella places and do it that way.
But the issue is, where are they gonna put this stuff?
Well, that's a whole nother issue.
You know, I mean, that, I mean, I'm just talking, you know, locally and statewide and nationally, I mean, we've just, are drowning all this stuff.
Oh, and in the recycling, nobody wants it?
Nobody wants it.
And, uh, it, it turns out, you know, when they have these sorting places, there's so many vari- you wouldn't think it, but there's so many variables, so we didn't get recycled that, we really shouldn't be in recycling.
Yeah.
And it's, it's so labor-intensive, it's, uh, and now nobody wants it.
Yeah.
There's a lot of problems coming ahead with that stuff.
Yep. Okay, uh, other business. Um, one thing that, uh, uh, I'll bring up, it came up today, and Tyler Resch, I think we all know, um, unofficial, uh, Bennington County historian, works at the, the museum, uh, resident of Shasberry, former selectman, uh, he was reading the article in VT Digger about the economic summit, which is Thursday of this week. He would like to go, um, it's a seventy-five dollar entry fee, and he was wondering if the town would pick up his entry fee. Um, I'm inclined to do it, I think, uh. I'm inclined to do it, I think, uh, you know, we, I think, uh, he's a writer, he regularly writes in VT Digger, uh, he's liable to make connections there to, uh, you know, that could benefit us and be able to, to tell about things that happen in Shasberry on the economic front. So, he's not currently a, uh, a town official, but as I say, he has been, he's very interested in, in town, regularly shows up at our meetings, so...
Can you come back and report to the, the...
Yes, I will put that to him.
Why don't you make that a...
If he's willing to make a report on the, uh...
Maybe we can pay a third of the cost, he can pay fifty, or maybe it's seventy-five or something.
No, let's pay the whole thing. Because he's, because he's got a, he's got a, he's got a travel.
Yeah, so, yeah, and then have to come back and make a report to the, to the board.
Okay.
Because it's valuable stuff, and I read the, the...
It's a good count, good connection, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and I will be there, so...
Yeah. You want a motion?
Um, do we need a motion, or do we have consensus?
Consensus.
We have consensus.
Certainly.
Good, thank you. Reviewing action items, I didn't write anything down tonight. Previous things we were carrying forward were the water fountain, which we've got an update on.
It's a big rush on water fountain.
We've been talking about taking a look at merging trustee funds, we have a meeting proposed schedule for, uh, the twenty-eighth. So Dave and I will be there with the, meeting with the trustees on that. We promised that we would start putting our capital project schedule on the website, and we talked about that tonight. And I can't think of anything we promised we would do tonight.
I'm the big truck night guy.
Big nut, truck night went well, yes? Uh, we, uh, we honored our firefighters, as, as we do every year with milestone awards. This year, uh, Eric Bouchy hit a ten-year mark and got his, uh, his mug. Just by luck of the draw, he was the only one this year. Uh, last year, there were, I think, ten people who, uh, whose service landed on an increment of five or ten. Uh, but I think it's a, uh, an amazing thing, and really a credit to...
Yeah.
The, the, the commitment and service that we...
So lucky.
We measure milestones, uh, of service on the fire department in five-year increments, because we have people that are there five, ten, fifteen, twenty. Our, our chief has been there for forty years.
Yeah.
Charlie Becker has been there for almost unbelievable seventy years. Uh, yeah, it's a...
Isn't he like the oldest volunteer fireman?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think so. The longest-serving.
He has gotten national recognition for his service.
Almost before fire.
Tim and I were talking before the meeting started, it doesn't really recognize the firemen as much as I'd like to at truck night. We're searching for something.
I think so, there. I mean, to have, you know, Digger was talking about the just, are you, uh, were they meeting in Arlington about the, the lack of volunteers?
Yeah, the, uh, well, yeah, that goes through the, that brings up the whole ambulance service issue.
Yeah, yeah.
But each town is, is struggling...
Yeah.
With maintaining volunteers. Uh, it's, it's a nationwide problem, but because of the demographics of this state, it's becoming very difficult.
Yeah.
And, uh, yeah, you have a real good group of dedicated people who are staying with it here.
Well, we're lucky, we have a group of people in this town, put a lot of hours in, not just volunteer firemen, but everything else.
Yeah.
The committees that they run, yeah, yeah.
North Arlington has a good crew, too.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I have nothing else.
Tim, just one thing. I, a hundred percent in behind putting more money into blacktop funding if we have to. Uh, I'm kind of hesitant to, with all the burritos they're putting in, and the French drains and everything they're doing there, uh, everything that they've ever done since I've been on this board, where them drains been put in, the road has been fixed. And before we start just willy-willy going out, spending all kinds of money, uh, this year, to me, is a good example. You've got, what, seventy miles of dirt road, Dave?
Fifty of dirt, twenty of paved.
Okay. You're inch and a half right now, to two inches above normal for rain. Rain does two things to you. It softens the roads up, if you just grated them, and turns them soft. If it rains, you can't grade. Therefore, the potholes get bigger, and you can't get back to grade them, so it's kind of a snowball effect. And I think if we maintain with the new roller we got coming, and the extra grading we want to do, when, when you can grade, before we start spending hundreds of thousands of dollars going out, spending more money on the roads, I think we better just see what's happening with what we're doing.
I hear what you're saying, um, but I also hear from the public a lot, and, uh, they're saying what Art was saying at the beginning, is, I don't, the roads in Arlington are better, the roads in Pownell are better.
Well, no, Arlington's got a third of the roads we've got. And it's still, it's, like I say, you just can't get back to grade it. And when you didn't get back and grade it, 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 the piles will be that deep, gets that deep, when you do grade it, it doesn't stay as long. So it's, like I say, it's a big snowball. So I would say, keep the grates going while you can, when you got a soft spot in the spring. It's amazing, I'm telling you, you don't understand what them French drains will do, and they're the cheapest way to fix a road there is.
Okay.
But do they have the same population driving on their roads that we do, or less?
They have a different kind of roads, yeah. Their main roads.
We're just trying to make the conversation more viable.
You're right, you're right.
Well, I, I, I don't think that anybody doubts that, you know, the fact that we have more roads than anybody else is a challenge. But I think, Dave, you were saying, I, I don't know exactly the road, the mileage, but we have more miles than, uh, Pownell, but Pownell spends almost as much as we do on their roads.
Yeah, they actually spend more.
You know, I, I got a feel that part of it is, you know, dollars per mile.
And there's no doubt that even to do what Ken's talking about, you know, we're not gonna have this money, we're spending a hundred and fifty fiscal twenty, we're not gonna have that again unless we generate more money.
Yeah, this is, these projects, like I say, this is two years' worth, because we have money that we compiled for two years.
And we, we just got a lot of grants. We had a real bonus year, you know, in grants. Now, that's not always gonna happen, but just doing what Ken's talking about, while we do the maintenance, putting in these things, yeah, I mean, more money just means we do that a lot quicker, and we get to all these things. And then, like I said, each section, too, and we have this whole new report coming out from another grant, that's going to direct us in the areas we have to work in to fulfill our responsibilities under the municipal, general permit. So, you know, there, there's a lot of issues coming up, but, you know, you take each section, and some, that'll help, some, like where we're gonna do with Shasberry Hall, this has to be ripped out completely and started over again. But, you know, my feeling is really to move forward and correct a lot of the problems and get people more comfortable on the roads, we're gonna have to come up with an ability to, to hire a contractor to do a lot of these mattresses, the ditching. You know, if we were off by a few years here, it'd be like we could catch up, but, uh, we've, we've not, we're off by a lot.
And you're finally becoming systematic.
Yeah. Once we end a program, like just going around and doing this, you know, we're hitting spots that we all know, but, you know, it's, I always have to say, like, I, I, I know there's lots, there's lots, but we, we're limited, so let's pick what we can. But, you know, having, like, Pownell's a good example, because they have nearly the same miles, but they do spend more than us on the roads. And, and we need to up the game a little bit.